This March. I would call this March sixth, twenty twenty four meeting to order. Mr. Prit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is safe. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're bringing this meeting, discussing Memorial Building. And I'm gonna let Ms. Taylor take it from here.
Okay, well, so the county commission recently learned that some funding for broadband expansion that we had sought from the state fallen through. The county had a three point five million dollar match in that broadband expansion. And when that fell through, that three point five million dollars, which was allocated from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, from the COVID money, became free. And so that is going to, what we're, what we decided to do as a group, we know there are certain issues of great public interest. One of them is the memorial building and the county park. Which are under the same umbrella from the county perspective. The park board has authority and and control over both of those things along with our park director. They fall under him. But we're going to also do workshops on trails, public service districts, municipalities. So we can give these issues the attention they deserve. And and then we'll also, as far as American Legion is concerned, if you have any other charitable events that you're doing and that you would like a contribution from the county, we'll have a regular agenda where we'll put, consider other types of requests like that from the community. So just for your information. So that's, that's what we wanted to do was bring, you know, we know you guys worked hard to get the memorial building in our custody. I know it's been neglected for a lot of years. We have tried to get on top of that even with our general budget. allocations. We've put more money into repairs and 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 more effort into getting grants for those repairs. Then I think others in the past have done, but we are so woefully behind that, you know, it's going to require a lot to to get going. One of the things we asked the park director to do was get a list from Oki and 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 for the park to determine all the deferred maintenance, just to see where we're getting, just to try to make sure, you know, we can get, appreciate what's going on with that. And if we can get caught up on that, that's a preference I had. So I wanted to know what we were doing there. But where we really run into issues and and I'm surprised, I probably should have. Brian Good is here and he's also on the Fayette Town, Fayetteville Town Council, but the town of Fayetteville has been very interested in, you know, of course, what we do with the memorial building also. And had approached, I know at least me and Commissioner Luisos, I don't know if they approached John, but about the about putting a rock, they had a plan. They had somebody study it about putting a rock climbing wall and there are some other things. And had even asked us to turn over patrol of it and the property to them. So it's now Fayetteville. I've been resistant to that. I think, you know, we took on responsibility and I think we need to continue with it. But.
Allison sent them to the work. I didn't clarify that point. Oh, that was, uh, the town plan study. It wasn't.
I didn't even see you walk in behind Brian. I need to put my glasses on.
When it clarified since at the workshop.
Yeah, please do.
The fact that that bombing law was part of the CC town plan disposal of American Legion as well as Tom. I don't think we've met really, but Tom, we were up at the memorial building. Our plan is basically restoration, preservation, they continue it as a gem, and also to have a war memorial museum in that location, as well as a sports museum for the county.
Okay, I had.
Their building was. I just wanted to clarify that.
I had not heard that plan. What I heard was.
Yeah, believe it or not.
It's always a study.
I should have took over the talk as well, should have done.
I'll take it over now.
Well, I was gonna add to, we did meet.
More reason.
Yeah, one week, yeah.
Before that misconception.
And you're right, Mr. Crookshake, I should really, I should have stopped, not only with the ARPA money we talked about doing this, but I did meet with them, with the town of Fayetteville, and asked them how, what they, how they felt about if the town did. We worked out an agreement or something between the town of Fayetteville and county, how they felt about what should be done with the, with the memorial building as well. And the fact they had a meeting, I believe, and that's one of the things we was going to talk about today, along with using the ARPA money.
So that's just something I wasn't in a loop off of.
Right, but our conversation was when you told me that not everybody in the county liked Fayetteville and might not appreciate us having the memorial building.
Well.
Uh, which I, you know, I took that as, as, but then my question back to you was how many other municipalities were coming and saying? We want to fix it.
Right, and that wasn't the only thing we said, because remember I was in town hall and you showed me that presentation that somebody put together for you in the CDC. Right, right, right.
That's you misunderstood. But yes, that was a draft of a plan, not our plan. Council didn't approve it. Council hasn't approved it yet. It was a thought of what could be done, a visioning, if you will, kind of like when you all did the visioning for about nineteen. Similar to that.
Is there anything else you would like to add about that?
No, I just want clarification.
Okay, all right, why don't you take that?
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to explain one of the workshops.
I know, I'm sorry. You shut it from me now.
This, uh, we, we came from Oki, you probably already had that, but I'll give you this just in case. Uh, I'd like to begin to say thank you very much. For this opportunity to appear before you and voice some of our concerns with our memorial to our three, to our soldiers, both those who died in action since the world began, the world went on up through the present, well, all soldiers even before that, but specifically this group. Uh, we have over three thousand two hundred veterans living in Fayette County. I guess where, what concerns us the most is the obviously deteriorating condition that you see here. It's not been receiving attention over the years. And I, I want to speak for, uh, speak for just a few minutes. Our concern is about the building and we want to work with whoever ends up with that, with that memorial building, whether it could be, as I suggested there, maybe there's some title with discussion between the town and the commission about the, the future of that building. But the bottom line for the, for the American Legion, and I would like to add to the members of the VFW are a part of our organization now and meeting with us, but uh, their representative had a doctor's appointment today and he could not be here with us. That is the, instead of VFW. So they're, they're a part of this, but they are represented here today. But what, uh, we are, we're, the bottom line with us is that we're interested in saving that building and doing all of the things, including what's listed here, uh, that I shared with you. Uh, I don't know, I haven't had enough, I've never been up on the roof, so I don't know the condition of that. And I can't really comment on that, other than I think that there are some things that need to be done. But here are thirteen items that, uh, that really makes stand out for what needs to be done. And I realize there's a lot of cost involved, how much, your guess is good as mine. But this is too important. This is a memorial to those, those who have died in service, who died as member, uh, prisoners of war. Uh, and, and all the other soldiers right up to the present, and it's too important to let this building fall, fall down. And we are going to do everything we can to possibly save that building and, and they encourage you to do whatever you can. We've realized and that you're, you're in the driver's seat here and that uh, it is indeed something that really needs to receive immediate attention. If we don't, uh, you know, this is again the Fayette County soldiers and sailors in the world building. This is not a Fayetteville soldiers and sailors. Garland there, uh, it's a chaplain, uh, member of the committee, he's Mr. Compton is from Old Ron Bossing, you know, Jim Akers. Uh, and we have a hundred and thirty members. And I don't know how many is in the DFW. But I think that's basically my, my position on this. Other three members might have, it's time for you to head to what I have. They're fine, but I'd be happy to entertain questions that, that you might have.
Okay, Amy has already started some work on some of this, so if you can fill us in, please.
Okay, so I had a, I put out an RFP for contractors to give us a bid. We're just at least a proposal on how much it would cost to secure the entire outside of the building. Um, we had, and Brian was there, and it was the twentieth, February twentieth. It appeared to me when we first had the pre-bid meeting that we had three people that were going to bid on it. Came to find out afterwards, those three are working together because it's going to take a roofer and a woodworker and a mason to take care of everything that is failing. And those three guys that were there are working together to put together that one bid. They also contacted me and said that they are reluctant to give us a bid for the entire building at once because it's going to be exorbitant because of all the work that's going to need to do. And there's going to be a lot of unknowns because once they pull that brick out, they don't know what the cornice board is going to look like. They don't know what the roof is going to look like. They don't know, there's a lot, there are just too many unknowns. So that's going to be interesting. We're, we're going to end up with one bid and we're just going to have to work off of that. And then they said they, we could basically, they're working on the north side of the building, which is the library side. We could basically just mirror it on the south side and then probably the similar for the the east and west, which is the front and the back, the stairwell in the back. So we, I think those are due March fifteenth. I'm working with them on answering questions and we're going back and forth and they've got until this Friday to do that. Um, so we will have that on our March twentieth to open that bid. So we'll kind of have an idea of what it's going to cost just to fix the one side of the exterior. And the library is experiencing. Uh, they had some leaks, I think it was coming in through their window. They also, the contractors went in and looked that backside of the balcony wall. Um, there were a lot of leaks coming in there. Maintenance has done what they can to patch that and keep it as secure as they can. But the bricks are starting to fall off on the outside exterior and be a, be a health hazard to everyone. So that's where we are on that. Um, and then we also, I'm, I'm going to, we applied for one grant to take care of. We've got some water. It's, the whole building is just not watertight. And that's the main problem with just making it safe and secure. And the front porch has many cracks in the foundation. We, if you go in the basement offices, which we were going to move some offices down there, and then it was just constant flooding and leaks. Um, we took a lot of pictures of the inside there, lots of water and rust and just all kinds of damaged plaster falling off the walls because the porch has too many cracks in it. So we put out a bid for that as well. It came back just to fix the porch at seventy three thousand. Um, I applied for a grant that was only capped at sixty thousand, so we're supposed to hear about that in this month, maybe next week. They said mid-March. Um, I don't expect we'll get that one because sixty thousand is all they had to give. Um, so I will be applying for another grant through the state, which is a fifty fifty match. And they do like to at least give fifty thousand dollars. So a fifty fifty match would, at least if we get that one, would take care of the porch. Hopefully if every, if all those amounts stay the same. That was November that I got those quotes. Um, so that's what I've been working on. Um, I also have been pricing out how much it would be to kind of sound deadened or fix some of the acoustics inside so we can use that building um, a little bit more effectively for meetings, concerts. If anybody's ever tried to hear little kids singing there, you might as well not be listening to them. Um, and it's got a great stage. Um, we do have some roof problems back there too, but um, it's, it's a good space. It just needs some things to fix it. As for the bleachers, the seating upstairs, we priced out some things five or six years ago for the, uh, for the chairs upstairs that we're going to have to redo them in a foundry in Cincinnati, I believe. And so one of our commissioners had taken a sample and it was going to be cost prohibitive to replace them that way without some sort of outside funding. Um, so they just dropped that. That may have been like twenty fifteen or sixteen that we did that. That's what I can speak to.
So the roof, right?
We had the roof, part of the roof replaced in twenty twenty, I think it was. We got a grant to do that. Um, it was just the flat part over the stage. Now, I've been told that there's more deterioration. I haven't been up there on the stage lately because they told me it was bad, so I didn't want to go up there. But what, does someone else know what the condition is?
I thought there was a pre-bid on, on the roof.
Oh, the roof was the annex. That was the annex. And the pre-bid I had down here was for that masonry issue up near the.
No, I thought it was Memorial Building.
I thought, I thought we did something.
I had over that.
We did a pre-bid to make the roof back apart, maybe that.
Yeah, we've had three different pre-bids.
I'm sorry.
Or actually, yeah. Yeah, sorry. No, we didn't. We have not done anything on the memorial building, bro. But we do have a roofer in, but.
Come up? So we're like, I don't understand.
No, um, and we had, um, we do have a roofer involved in the pre-bid that Ryan and I held because it's going to take that because the flashing that comes over from the roof is going to be a problem. Um, I think there are three different, is it, there are three different kinds of roofs on that building? We've got the EDPM over the or EPM, whatever it is, over the, um, the flat part. And then it's like wooden metal aluminum structure. They told us that it's, um, the curved part over the basketball court is, um, there's like an aluminum coating over top of it. So it's going to be really weird to, it's not common anymore, I don't think. And then there's the front part of the building has a different roof.
If you look at the memorial, that's where their structure is really at, big dome, like airport hangar looking thing, which is great because it sheds the water, it sheds the water to the flat spots.
Yeah.
Which is where we have a problem with the gutters and that upgrade alone on the library side would help a ton because this winter we had ice issues, falling debris issues and things like that. So that's why those kind of three guys went together. And it's. It's interesting. Now, one guy was a store cool, which is really great. He does some really cool buildings all around, all the way through Morgantown and other places.
He's involved with Preservation Alliance, so he knows his stuff. It stays wet. You can tell that it's constantly wet because there's, um, black water damage. There's mold, there's moss growing it, so it just never has a chance to dry out. So, um, we're going to be involved. They, they're bidding out for that. Whatever roofing needs to be done, just to fix that cornice and that precipice or whatever they call it, that sticks up a little bit where the flashing comes down. Then they'll have to figure out if there's how much wood damage because they know there's wood rot back there. To replace that, then we'll have to replace some of the bricks because some are so too far gone to be able to reset, off to color match. And then they'll have to re-point and, um, re-mortar around the existing bricks that they can save. Then the wood guy comes in and redoes the decorative wood cornice around the edge. And that's another unknown because he can't tell how much of it is going to need to be replaced, what can be repaired, because until they get in there and tear, start tearing it apart, they won't know how much is rotted. He's hoping that they can salvage some of it.
So we're getting prices on all that you mentioned.
Yeah, and.
Each to a month.
And the fifteenth is when they're due.
We realize that there's a lot of cost involved here. Uh, I wouldn't, personally wouldn't pretend to have an idea of how much money you're speaking of here to properly restore that building. Uh, it'd be like putting a bunch of figures on the wall and throwing the dart. But I know it's, it is a large amount to, to bring that building back up to the desired condition. And then again, I would I would have to iterate to you that whether it's you or you work out an arrangement with some other entities such as the town. The bottom line is that we, we feel very strongly and will work with anyone and everyone about bringing that, that building up to desired standards.
One of the questions I had, Mr. Prit, been the last time we met, I think November, October, November, when we had Mrs. Crook shame, is if the county would, and Fayetteville would work out some agreement, what we discussed is as long as it was kept as a Fayette County Memorial Building, Soldiers Memorial Building, would you have, what, what issues would you have, any issues if Fayetteville utilized that building and in some type of agreement? That was one of the questions.
I live in Fayetteville and, yeah, and, and I'm speaking strictly for myself right now, because we've not completely discussed, discussed that the American Legion, we were uh, canceled out because of the snow in January and so we didn't, you have a chance to really discuss it the other night. But I have complete trust and, and, and I do personally have complete trust in the town of Fayetteville and anything that you work out with them. Uh, I, I would feel very confident that it would be, be, be something that we as American Legion and hopefully the, the F W would, would be pleased with. Where again, where, as I said earlier, we're interested in the bottom line. Is that building being brought back up and, and hopefully even you, like, you, some of you just lived your thirty years. But I, I, I know what kind of activity took place in that memorial building with concerts, for example. Uh, last meeting, last singer we had there was John Conway, I believe, and I was there and I couldn't hear anything.
Yeah, it's not a good acoustical space.
Uh, I could hear it, but I couldn't tell. Here you can, I could hear, but I couldn't hear the words and the music properly. The point is, is that that sound, the whole building is not acoustically designed back in nineteen fifty. Uh, I don't think they realized that if you just use certain kind of blocks, you can then the sound has acoustic values. But that is, uh, uh, those things perhaps can be returned to, to where it could be a center of activity, not just volleyball or basketball. And that's great for what they do right now, but the building shouldn't be much more than that. It should be a monument to our military people throughout Fayette County, I think. And, and, uh, it's just, uh, so I can make a lot of comments, but I'll just leave it at that and, and we, we will do our best to, to work with whoever is, is in charge and I feel confident that you as a commissioner, now I think you probably maybe more aware of the needs now than what you were in the past. And, but, uh, we'll work with whoever ends up with the building and, uh, uh, the bottom line is we want it brought back up.
Okay, well, and I do, and I do want to apologize. I didn't let the commissioners, it was so long ago, I should have, and I do apologize, Ms. Taylor and Sean. But we talked in November and I really didn't bring them up to speed what we talked about and, and I should have really brought that up.
My comment about Fayetteville is mischaracterized a little bit. I didn't say people didn't like Fayetteville. I mean, there are some people in county that don't, but, but the point was like the idea of Fayetteville taking over because it was the county. That's the kind of feedback I was getting from people when I see them out, you know, who are very watching the memorial building, what happened very closely. Um, but I was never opposed, and I think I made that clear when we met, um, to a partnership or, you know, I just had concern about transferring ownership. But, but the, but the partnership makes sense. It's right. Get going. The fact when Charlie Wendell was here, um, doing the ribbon cutting on his projects, apartments and things up behind it. He mentioned an interest in talking to us or working with us about how we might develop the memorial building. Because, you know, it's going to affect his businesses that are behind it. And I had talked to our park director about that.
Yeah, I think it could, it, it could also be quite a draw, but, you know, things have changed in the last few years in Fayette County as a, now that we're, have a national park. The growth is just tremendously occurring and, and, you know, whether other people, whatever they might claim, whether it's this county or that county, Fayetteville and, and Fayette County is the epicenter of the national park. Now, that's, that's the cold hard fact. And I think by developing, taking care of this memorial building, that will add to the the culture, it will add to what visitors will see and come to in, in Fayette County. And, and that, this building can and should be a great part of the, of the future of Fayette County. And, and it's an opportunity. It's not a problem. I used to keep a little sign on my desk that problems are opportunities in disguise. Well, that's what this is. The problem with a memorial building is, is an opportunity in disguise for Fayette County. And West Virginia, I might add. I wa, I was watching a little bit of Weather Channel the other night. Tail end of the feature on the national park. So we're, we're, I think we're becoming known across the nation. And we, we need to give a lot more attention to a lot of the things, including our roads. I'm getting into politics. I'll stay out of that. I, I, I could go on and on and on. But, uh, other questions you might have of us.
I think we agree with you. I mean, the, the thing that's overwhelming to me is just the, the gravity and, and the enormous amount of work that needs to be done just to get it up to speed. I, I think even if we invested the entirety of the remaining ARPA money, that it would not get it exactly to where we wanted it to be. Um, and, and it's hard to justify, you know, putting all of it when we have needs countywide, you know, into one, one place. So even, we'd love to be able to do it. So I, I think getting the numbers, you know, on how, what it's going to cost to do these sorts of things and getting somebody who knows more than we do about, you know, makes more sense to me that we would fix the roof first. So anything we put under it is protected, um, from further damage, but.
Well, obviously the exterior.
In the exterior, we don't want.
Water is the.
Getting hurt.
Lessing and occurs when it comes to any kinds of construction.
Right. So I know those things are important. I know we've asked the park director and the park board to, to try to come up with some ideas about how we might better use the memorial building. Pimpleball as a sport, I'm going to just let the park director speak to all this because he's been doing the, the homework on it. But, um, but just ideas. I mean, just trying to figure out what we can do. Uh, Fayetteville has a huge music, you know, culture. And if we can get the acoustics fixed, I think it would be used. We had a big music venue burned down um, a couple of years ago when the road burned down. And, you know, there were people who would like to go there and probably like have more music here in town available on a bigger venue. Um, I think especially when outdoor venues aren't available, I think there would be a market for that, but. Ryan, do you want to talk about some of your ideas that you guys had?
Um, you, you, we got a lot of our board members here, so they've got some great ideas, uh, not just for the memorial building, but for the park also. So we're trying to address the memorial building first. Um, you're a guy sort of crossroads, our whole community is with the memorial building. Is it a profit structure or is it a community center? That's the top one. You know, everybody goes through these phases. Are we going to build something that we're going to probably have to bring, honestly nowadays you bring outside promoters to do a music event. You know, it's like, that's how things go. So we provide throughout the space, we get the things going. All this really depends on is that infrastructure, just like we're saying. Get the water going. We have some bit issues up top on the roof. There's things, you've been, we're going to hear those things slamming. That's a lot of, that's harder than money going out the, so that's a simple fix, not a simple fix. That's one of those early things we kind of want to look at. Also, the sound system in there, like we're talking about with the cooties, like you brought up, like if we are going to kind of go to the route of possibly entertainment, that's, that's not, it's, it's two thousand and twenty four. There's ways to kind of make these acoustics work after we get some of the then it sounds like a lot seventy five grand for the works to get water, but that's not, that's a good spin. That roof is a good spin, I hope, especially if we do the phases that those guys talked, there's a really good group of guys that came there for that. I'm surprised they teamed up and also understand why, because they all did have a very specific of their best job, what they did was. Uh, the water issues that we talked about, the louvers, and then obviously if you go into the entertainment world and basketball games or any sporting event, we're going to have to look at seats. There is a number, not just twenty, something thirty, forty seats that we need to repair. And we've talked about this before, they boost. Those aren't, you just go buy those chairs. We're going to have to have somebody make those hinges that's cast iron, that's real metal, that's a difference. So that's a, that's a whole nother thing that we could think about. Is that we can migrate all the existing chairs into a good section and then maybe build some more. But that's as a community and as a commission that we have to think more than that with this. A lot of communities now, like I know John and Tom and Arthur, but we've all talked about like the community center concept also, that's, that's not a lot of times revenue. that's not a lot of times revenue generating. It's not for the memorial building that we remember, you know, it didn't get booked out, but also it is the groups playing pickleball. Uh Dana Swank, his group played basketball, which just ended last week. They could play all winter and have great, huge. If you've been there on a Saturday and you see what's going on there, that's everybody in your community out doing stuff.
And it's drawing food trucks in and yeah, people are walking up and down the street just to go to the food trucks, even if they're not doing basketball.
Absolutely. And that's 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 a part of your town. Now, we can also, you gotta find a way to make it both work. You know, usually you get your facility built and up to shape, and with the money that you're spending, if we go spend one point five million, blow all right, on all those repairs we just talked about today, when you walk through a memorial building, you're not going to see anything different than what you remember. It's not like it's polished and new. It just looks like it did, which is great, and you know it's safe and we can move forward with it. Um I really like the idea of the flame concept outside. I think you guys, I know how much that means to you, and I've heard a lot of our community going. That's like one of those easier attendee issues. Maybe we could look at is like the uh of like visibility of it is the the flame back, right? A lot of your community asks about the flame. How can we get the flame? Well, if we get the the structure going and feel good about your money and feel good about that investment, then you pull back and add the flame or what it is, and that's that's nostalgia type thing. That's a that's a kid. I remember the flame, right? If you were a kid in this area, you probably tried to put the flame out and said, well, one, right? And it's like the thing is, it kept lighting and it was always there. And a lot of our members, and I know the guys remember that flame, but it means a lot to them, and they all they they've said it over and over.
What happened to it? Because I went to the re- reopening of it a few years ago. And and uh for those of you who don't know, I'm also a veteran, Air Force seven years. After duty, but um and I'm on the VFW, so I will go to their meeting on Monday and let them know what we discussed, just so they know, but um but what happened?
I hear it's a gas line issue.
Yeah, it keeps it can't any time the wind would blow or if it would rain, it would put it out, like whatever is keeping it going is not going.
Well, there's something around to keep the wind from blowing and just.
Well, and it's like every day I would drive to work and like flames out again, flames out again, flames out again.
I mean.
Uh I was.
We do it at Arlington Cemetery. We should be able to do Fayetteville.
If we focus, we can opinion that. We have awesome craft in this area who do metalwork and who do great things themselves. So if we get the concept of what works, I mean, your furnace has, if if it burns, goes out, it comes back on. There's automatic systems and sensors for that. So that's something that once we look at structure, I think it'd be a great thing to start with and I mean, invite you guys back to date, I think, live again, it'd be a really cool moment, I think, for everybody in our camp, you know, so something to think about. Um TJ, did you have some?
I have some stuff. He has given me a couple other smaller things like sinks, um the toilet flush mechanisms, like little things like that that could end up saving a bunch of money. So I'll just give that to Amy later.
Okay.
A lot of hits were energy conserving water, the heat thing up top, like there's these huge fans up top, and sometimes those things will blow open, so our our heat goes right out. When you're in there doing your sport, you don't notice, right? Or in the in the summer, we have those fans going, but it's like if we start saving money on our our resources there, then that makes everybody feel good. Instead of seeing that huge building you guys see, it was like, all right, we're saving money here, so let's move forward. That two hundred grand we saved in gas bill, let's move it to wherever it goes next.
Well, and I guess the the critical thing that we run into, and this is what happened in Montgomery, um the mayor had researched um taking over the Visi Center for as a community center down there and and, you know, having it, and they really do need something. They closed the pool. They just don't have anything for kids to do. But the problem was, he found and then came back to us and said, scratch my request for money, because they found that they weren't going to be able to maintain it. And and that's the issue. Like, if we go the community center route, we definitely have to be able to budget and put it incorporate it into our budget and commit to maintaining it, because if we don't, it's we're going to be right back here. I mean, you know, so if we're going to go with that concept, I think we just.
In community centers, a lot have to have revenue generating memberships. You know, that's one thing is like, so hey, I'm part of the community and this is looking good with this. This meeting, a lot of times isn't about us. I always think this meeting is about my son who's fifteen, right? Like what he's going to see in Fayetteville coming as he grows. It's like if you're a member, you get to go to the possible rock climbing wall, the possible pickleball courts, the the some who got so a few of our guys here go walk in there in the winter, you know, you see guys doing laps and ladies doing laps in there. That's that's something that then then you if you do go the route of community center, there are some ways to generate, and plus then on the side, we obviously rental and we do other things like that. You know, there's a graduation up there tomorrow for the the school of Montgomery.
So and and what's regarded cooperative situation, I mean, I'm wide open to cooperating with the the town, because I think the town is very innovative. The town does great with its tourism. I mean, there are just things that we could learn from it, and it has the greatest state. I mean, it's right there in the middle of town. So so, you know, I'm definitely open to that. I mean, it it was more about the ownership that that I've bought at just because of some of the feedback I've gotten, but that doesn't mean my mind's made up.
So that.
I want it to be well maintained, you know, as you know, as a resident of veteran, I want it, I I wouldn't say, you know, we don't want to turn it over when they can afford to maintain it, we can't. So, you know, that's that's really what's most important.
So I think I think what I hear, go ahead.
Well, that's what we talked about before. When we talked to to the crew here, we were asking them if they were open to the idea. And I get like a dual role here, being your park coordinator, director guy in town, also about Fayetteville. So I also know what benefit that building would do as alone for parking, restrooms, tourism, just that center place that, hey, this is where our adventure kind of starts for Fayetteville. And a good cooperation between your county and your town, that that's that's a strength that is hard to hard to see sometimes. But it's there, you know, and then some of you guys asking them it was okay to do that, if it's it's disrespectful to let people come in here and just use the value. And that's why we asked the American Legion, and they were very open about the more use that it was getting and more exposure to the memorial itself was a great idea.
So that's that's what I'm going to say. So I think everybody's in agreement to try to work together. The next step is, is that the commission agree with that? Oh, yeah. Yes, sir.
Not even going to work. I haven't met this tailor personally here at the county commission, but I want to check. I haven't met the other. As a resident of Fayette County, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to your ideas. But my understanding is that the Fayette County taxpayers paid to have that building built. Turning over complete ownership would be a slap in the face, as far as I'm concerned, to the veterans of Fayette County. Now, certainly Vietnam, and I'm a proud veteran, just as you are on this too, I can tell. But it's been neglected. And I'm not wanting to attack anyone. Prior, yes. Present, yes. Because this information has been brought to you guys numerous times. And I know that's a fact. And here we are several years later, looking at a building that is almost ready to be demolished because it's it hasn't been okay, it hasn't been taken care of by the people responsible for that. And I just want to make that known that and I'm not certainly not down on what he said. I appreciate it. We talked about it. But as I listen, to me, it's going to be more of a Fayetteville project than it is a county project with veterans. That's just my input. And the veterans that I've talked to, they're. That's one state that I want to be known with.
And that's more consistent with the kind of feedback I was getting um about it, but but I do want to say I don't think it's a matter of taking it away from the county county veterans. It's a matter of figuring out how we can get that money squared away. Because we've been like the little Dutch boy with our finger in the dike over there. We did not previously have a budget that would support, you know, even the most modest repairs to that building um before. But we have been working really hard to save money and to cut some of the spending that we thought um was not directed properly toward countywide interests. So we had done that, and now we are starting to see a surplus in our budget and the ability to budget for regular repairs. And we also have the opportunity to use some of this ARPA money to catch up, which is which is something that we have talked about in multiple meetings, trying to figure out how to do it. Because you you heard it is a very imposing beast to slay. It's just got so much wrong. And um and because of its historic nature, there, you know, there are only certain people who can work on it, and it costs a lot more money than it would to repair. The same is true for the sports house. I mean, it's it's just been an issue, a challenge that we've run.
You know, and I'm not trying to point fingers out, but prior administrations, and and I don't need to take with a grain of salt. Most any of the excess money they ever had usually went towards other projects that shouldn't have went towards, to be honest with you. I mean, I mean, I mean, it's just, it's fact. Well, now that we've got everything lined out, and it's not going to Wood Creek Park, it's not going, I'll just go ahead and name, it's not going to the farm over there, and it's not going to all these special interest groups. Now that we've got, now that we've got a little healthier budget, we're starting to move the deputies off the back of the levy. We're starting to make a lot of changes, but making change overnight is when you're talking about millions of dollars and then the deputies itself, that's probably a million dollars, bringing them off the levy back onto the general account. Everything can't happen at one year or two years. This has been a a five-year process or a three-year process to make all these changes and start switching everything back around. So I mean, I could I can tell you, yeah, we can start today moving forward, but it took a while to get us to get where we are, actually bringing back money instead of throwing away in other areas that I thought was should be, that was shouldn't have been thrown away. Uh so I mean, that that's what I have for that.
But we we have a great opportunity now, because we do have money that is not allocated and not spent um that that we'll never get again. You know, so this is a great opportunity to, and that's what this meeting is about. Let's identify what we need to do to get that building um preserved and then see what we can do to use it more and make it, you know, restore it to to something that brings joy to the community that like it used to.
You mentioned the excess levy and deputies. I remember when that levy was voted on by citizens of Fayette County to fund the deputies' positions. Now, we still have the levy that we put deputies on, give a fund instead of using excess levy. Where's that money going to? We're just not getting our base, that's just.
Trying to reduce the levy.
Yeah, we're just.
Trying to reduce the levy.
Reduce the levies. What they should have, I think we're the only county and correct me if I'm, I mean, I I think we're the only county that had deputies on excess levy. I don't think any other county, I think I asked Sheriff Fridley to do a search. We was the only county that did that.
So if the levy failed, we would have twenty-three deputies without salaries and benefits, so.
That was one of the twenty dollars.
So so the goal is to avoid that happening. So that's the purpose of moving them off. Now that we have a budget is to be able to afford to give people raises and to be able to afford to pay our deputies out of our own salary, like out of our own revenue, like we should have been able to do all along, and to stop taxing the taxpayer for for that, you know, in addition to what they're already taxed for that.
That's one other issue I have is fifteen thousand dollars was allocated to the county of Anset to paint the flag.
Have you seen it? It's fifty feet high. It's a it's a very tall flag pole, and they had to hire somebody to shimmy up it, scrape it off, and then the flag kept catching on apart. It was not just to paint, but it was to repair and paint the flag pole. It was falling apart, and it's right there at the Veterans Memorial. So the VFW, that was something they wanted done. Um there are people in this town of Anset, veterans in the town of Anset, who aren't members of the VFW came to me about it, so I advocated for it. So but that was the purpose, because it's right there at the Veterans Memorial where they kick off the Heritage Festival every year, and it looked terrible. And there was no easy way to do it. I mean, we've looked in all kinds of things like bucket trucks and things like that, and there was just no other way than to have somebody climb it.
Yeah, did you buy a price?
They didn't use, yeah, they did, and they, well, a new one, no, but they didn't end up using all of that money. I think they only used about half of that money. And then the rest of it, we ended up approving to give to the VFW. So the rest of it, I think it they it was seventy-five to to nine thousand, seventy-five hundred and nine thousand that they ended up needing. But they searched all over and asked several people and got bids and everything. And um but the rest of it did go to the VFW. And if you've seen their building over there, it's terrible. I mean, they just had a fire there or a gas leak there a couple of weeks ago.
Talking about improvement that and the dedication. So is tomorrow or Ron, you may know, the the graduation service? Did the flag of the did the stage get fixed and the curtains so it's looks nice for the graduation?
I'm not sure. They they got kind of roll in a fair.
Because we're going, you know, when he says it was fixed, because that's a kickoff for the heritage. That's we we have Amber Cruz and everything looking at that stage with the torn and tattered.
You're right.
I mean, I don't know if that was fixed or not.
Um, probably not. Not that I know of.
Okay.
I didn't know, actually, I didn't know it was needed to be replaced.
Oh, you see it front center. Anytime you would be.
I guess it's something too, like as a group, you got to realize that, you know, this is about considering the workshop programs. It's not, we're not, they will allocate the money as as we're here. There's also other groups too. And so when they have the, it sounds like to us, when you say three point five million dollars, it sounds like that's like, it's not.
Right.
It is, but if you work in, you know, the fire department, you know how fast that gets, you know?
Yeah.
And it's also, I know you guys are spread, they're like, so you're going to do the the meeting today and have a trailsman possibly.
Right.
Those couple of other ones.
Um public service districts.
Yeah.
Um the ones that aren't under American Water Patrol, and then the municipalities have have some leads. We have not, and and I you were referring to my article, I think, in in my op ed, but um one of the things we were trying to do is is allocate even amounts of money throughout the county. And so there are still some areas in the county where we haven't put the same amount of money. Um so the valley still needs a lot of help. Um Daines Meadow Bridge area still needs a lot of help. And we really haven't given much to either of our larger municipalities to Fayetteville or Oak Hill. Um so those are all things that, you know, we're trying to, with the ARPA money, we're trying to make sure like there are community centers we've invested in and and other community centers we're exploring. Um but this is one of the projects, the reason this is a subject of a meeting, special meeting, is because it is important. And we do want your input and ideas and and your historical knowledge you have, and anything you can do to inform us so we can make wise decisions as we get the numbers in and that sort of thing um is is what we're looking for. And then we're also trying to do, we have the same problem with county park. Um our our pool has a leak and a sinkhole underneath it, and and it has been, the estimates we've gotten are prohibitive to to fix it. So again, if we put everything into fixing the pool, wouldn't have money left for the memorial building and some of the other places in the county. So um we're really just trying to, you know, um put our resources together with grants and try to figure out. Um we are going to write um for congressional earmarks is a great way to get big amounts of money for one-time projects. If you can just sell it to the people advocating for it, you know, um it's it's resulted in funding for lots of pool things. So um Amy is going to write up a congressional earmark request to do a lot of this stuff to the memorial building, see if we can get funding that way too. Um because if we could just give it a one-time investment by Congress, you know, that would get us up to speed. And we'll use some of the other funds for, you know, other improvements for things that we'd like to do. So.
The same thing that happened with the PSCs is the same thing that happened with memorial. Um it was fixed. Oh, we've got a little issue, but we'll put that on the back burner and go and do this. And that's happened before us. Uh with your PSDs right now, that's what we're facing. They don't want to raise the rates in order to fix what they should have put money back for. They don't have a contingency account, and that's the that's the scenario that we're in. We really don't have a contingency. Now that we do have some funding, we are going to work to try to get this done. But one thing that we all read and had a nice chuckle on on a social media was that a member of the community uh said that the VFW gave the memorial building two hundred thousand dollars per year, and they wanted to know where the money's gone.
Gave the county commission.
Yeah, yeah, gave the county commission. And and you folks know as well as we do, we don't get two hundred thousand dollars from you to take care of this building. And and that just shows that, just like the article that Commissioner Taylor wrote, there's a lot of armchair quarterbacks out there trying to make calls. To try to deflate some egos.
But you guys actually know what condition it's in and you knew more about it than I did. I mean, you know, I, and I know the park director's been trying to get on top of it. He's been in place less than a year. Is it less than a year still?
Always.
Okay, I thought so. I thought so because, so, you know, we've been engaged about it.
I'm not an armchair quarterback. But I did want an answer. I got the answer. I haven't played the interview.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't referring to you on that.
He wasn't referring to you. So there was somebody on social media. I mean, but we get that all the time.
I'm getting on social media.
Every government entity gets that. Well, it's just like, I'm glad the mayor corrected me because if not, she's right. Somebody would have heard it and gone out and said Fayetteville wants a rock wall in the memorial building. And then we would have heard about it for months, you know, so, you know. Yeah, but even facts, like a lot of people are just, they they pick and choose the facts, so it's, it's, it wasn't about you. But.
I'm, I'm sure it was, but I just wanted to clarify.
That's all we're trying to do, the partnership, realize the depth of. We, nothing that town is, hasn't wanted council to be the same with Elmer, it'd have to go to the legions with the stuff.
Well, I, you know, I think.
If if it's an opportunity, you've been great. If it's not, great. As long as the memorial building gets fixed, that's all I care about, very near and dear to my heart. I lost relatives in the war that were veterans, I hate uncles that they've been, I mean, it's very near.
Me, I I would still like, I don't mind partnerships. I don't mind a partnership that helps a lot of people in everybody. I I don't have a problem with it.
Keep the building vibrant. I mean, that gets it going and and Fayetteville is better poised than Fayette County to get people into that building. And and because they just have a robust um CDB tourism um organization that they do, you know, the Harry Potter weekends and things like that. They are able to get people here. So while, you know, I agree with you, I've had some major reservations about, you know, and and they weren't pushing for that.
We weren't pushing.
They, they were not pushing for it. They were just open to whatever it would take to get it going and help it.
And when we were here at the last meeting, she discussed the possibility of grants and things like that.
Right, you heard, yeah, to have a Fayette County Veterans Museum, Fayette County Sports Museum, again, Fayette County. Nowhere would it be bad on.
Okay, very good conclusion. I think in in situations like this, three things can happen, folks. You have win-win situations, you have win-lose situations, and you have lose-lose situations. And what we need to do is cooperatively work together to bring to a conclusion a win-win situation for everyone. Ever how we decide to go about it. We're selfish, we know that. American Legion, yes, we're selfish. We want that building now. It's not that we don't care about the rest of the county and all the things that you want to do. And we know that you're having probably six or eight arms and legs pulled at the same times by everyone. But uh we are, we feel very strongly about the history of this building. We, it's in a deplorable condition. We, we want to work with you, whatever that is, whether it be with the town or with you. But uh I think the, in the, the bottom line is that uh we, we want it to. To be restored to its original condition. It's an honor to our dead, past and uh in the vast, our present soldiers. And all of our veterans and that to me, uh and us, this is, if it can and should be. The number one priority for you as commissioners, whatever you decide to do.
How do you foresee the Legion's role in in trying in getting a plan together and executing a plan moving forward?
We would be happy to to serve on any kind of committee or do some groundwork. For whatever expertise individuals might have. Uh, but we're like the VFW and most of us. Now are getting up in years and physically it's a little more difficult for some of us than what it used to be. But perhaps we can get this thing pulled off while we're gonna be, get our veterans more energized. And and, you know, they're, they're probably the younger generation, well, there are fewer veterans now than there used to be. But each, each one of us have our thoughts and and the memorial building is a Fayette County building. And uh Jim, you and uh Russell have any comments before I said that?
No, I think you did a good, pretty, good job and I just wanna add that uh. Been a military legionnaire and a lifetime resident of Fayetteville. And matter of fact, I played the first basketball game in it, Jim, against Olive Bridge in nineteen fifty-two. So that's, that's been building to me, it's, it's military, it means growing up in Fayetteville. And uh that uh American Legion, which we represent here today. And uh is all veterans in Fayette County. The uh, we maintain our own pretty good. We've got a big building up there that we take care of ourselves. We, we've managed to find funds to keep that thing in good shape. And uh spite of souls we are, but we still maintain it. And uh we could do more if we're younger than, you know, the age things catch us pretty fast. It is, well, Fayette County veterans and not all social clubs, the same thing, it's going along the way. So uh. Wrong with the Legion, I think we should help you guys to do everything we can. To get that memorial back. It's changed, it's been neglected over the years. Little maintenance here, little maintenance there, we kept that building pretty good shape. But we sat there and completely ignored the thing, just used it. And uh, and we abused it too. And so uh I think there's, this is the start right here, it's a big start. I don't think it, that building is still one of the best buildings in states. It's still one of the best basketball courts in the state. There's not a bad place in a building that you can't see. And again, I, I was disheartened when they, high school students. See some classics with Oak Hill and Buckley in that building. And uh Greenbrier East and some of the colleges in West Virginia played in, or Shenandoah League played in. So that building's got a lot of history. And still got one of the greatest sports in in the state. So we got something to shoot for, we got something to try to maintain. And it's gonna cost money, sure, so is everything. But we can, we, we spend money on other things that maybe this is more important. You know, I, I believe in that infrastructure, the rest of the water, waters and so on, we need that. And there's a lot of things we need, cosmetic stuff, we don't need too much. And we, we spend a lot of money on cosmetics, making something look pretty. But we got something with water in destroying things, so we gotta hit the base of things. And I, I'm encouraged the way that you uh represented this to us and it's a lot to work with about all the county and all the veterans. I spent twenty-one years in the military, so it means a lot to me. And a lot, a lot of retired veterans in this town. That would help. And this is a sort of building, there's grants out there, historical buildings. And so, but we just gotta go after it.
That's what I'm going after. March thirty-first is the deadline for a state um historical preservation development grant.
The shore side too, there are grants, but not only on the civic side.
We've availed ourselves of that grant in the past for smaller repairs, but um she's about to apply again and see what we can bring in. And again, also earmarks, like any opportunity we see to to bring money in. We even at one point talked about trying to put our offices there so we could get the courthouse grants to be able to apply funds for there. Because if the commissioner's offices were over there, we had some courthouse offices over there, we would be able to get more funding. So we, we've looked, we've tried to look at doing that. And um I think I'm, I'm hopeful and I'll certainly personally advocate for it with our representatives. But um if we get a, a really good-looking, we might be able to get a big chunk of funding all at one time that would at least get us above water.
We're gonna have that matching funds on everything to get it.
Except for those, they'll give us the whole thing.
Yeah, well, that's great.
Yeah, so we love earmarks, they're, they're rare. Um, but but it's something that we can ask for. They're not guaranteed, but but this might be something given the veteran, you know, angle, so to speak. And and the veteran component, I'll say, the national park, the location in the town of Fayetteville. I think it would make an attractive um earmark.
I wrote one letter of support for a small grant that I made and we will, we stand ready to write further letters of. Whatever you do, you go after and do what they would plan.
Yeah, I keep Mr. Prince's phone number on my desk at the ready, so.
But Agent Compton, I don't wanna. I just don't wanna go by without you being able to make a comment.
Thank you, Honorable. Yeah, my name is Russell Compton, I'm an agent of American Legion over there. Also, I'm actually a man of the VFW, Oklahoma City, Montana, in Oak Hill. Come from a long line of military. My fourth great grand father, David Compton, was killed in American Division of the Civil. I have my somewhat of my last name, it's been been in military since then until a period of time. My son just finished in thirty-three years. They say I come from a long line of military and I'm in favor of whatever you pay. We need to pour together, bang that bit, you just get, get it going, get it. I hike a lot of trails, I spend a lot of time outdoor hiking trails. I run into people in the neighborhood, you know, tournaments, places like that, wanna be hiking. They'll say, I asked, I just, right in a conversation, I said, where are you from? They're from here, there, wherever, you know, I got to talk to them, where do you live? I said, I live right here, you know, about a quarter mile. And they said, if we're gonna stay up here such and such a place for two or three nights, what can we do here but not? You know, if we had a fall on a weekend, we had something going in the, I mean, tip of the deck, they're, oh, yeah, soldiers, soldiers. All the builders got some activities going there tonight, tell them what's there. But now they'll say, well, I say, well, I'll go to Charleston, you know, find something going on, you know, that, that they were. Wanting to do, you know, that they hike the trail for a day and want to go to play or something at night. I tell them about the playhouse down here in town, tell them about that also, but you know, they. They, like Amber was talking about, there's a lot of opportunity here for them. We get a lot of visions. I go, when I have my knee surgery, I go to the uh park service department, and I walk in and expect. Like, oh, get my knee in, you know, talk to a lot of people over there. You go to the parking lot, or any time you want to, and you'll see state after state, after state, after state. How to stay in vehicles there, to stop there, to visit their center, to look, you know, you know, the, walk to them. Same good opportunity, if we just had it here.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity. We, we greatly appreciate your, your invitation to us to come here and appear before you today. We hope that, uh, we said the right words, the right demeanor, all those things. And uh, but we do thank you very much.
We thank you for coming, giving us your thoughts. Appreciate you.
PJ had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Sorry about it, PJ.
I, I guess I thought that this was, was a little bit different, more like workshop we had for the CDB example.
And it may get there.
Yeah, um, so I had a couple kind of random ideas, some I understand will not be popular, however. Sometimes unpopular things work out to be the best option. Um, one of them was just to take a look at how, and this is just for small revenue generating, right? This is take a look at the website or the webpage that we have and how we are able to advertise the rentals there. Um, maybe looking at the insurance requirement and trying to find some agents that were able to, I think people get scared by that. And they don't understand that really it's sometimes like it's seventy-five dollar thing. There's a place in my hometown that is very similar to the memorial building. They have three links to three different insurance agents that here's kind of your form, here's what it looks like. They allow alcohol for a hundred and twenty-five dollars extra. So they have some options there that just make it easier for the general public to rent the facility. Taking a look at the concession stand. And I think that, uh, I could be wrong here, but some folks that don't charge an entry fee do self concessions. And is there a way that we can get a small piece of that, even if they're just paying a fee to use the concession area? So that way that incentivizes us to upkeep that particular section of the building. I know this isn't a very common thing in the U.S., but install paid toilets. Town all year long, um, or especially in the summertime and the weekends. And we visit the community in North Carolina regularly that does have paid toilets. And they're always better kept, better cleansed. And I think, you know, it's worth looking into. Some states actually have rules where you're not allowed to have paid toilets. I have no idea if West Virginia's one of those or not. And then for Memorial Building, my last idea is, is totally out there and not worth doing if we don't solve some of the other issues. But to be around the way to install some sort of an aerial park above the basketball court. Or on the edges above like the different balcony deans or the bleacher stands and have that be a paid for activity. But again, not worth it, that's the case.
To begin workshop-wise, we're talking about allocating, meaning the parks as a whole will be a memorial building as part of our far system and also the Fayette County Park. So PJ asked, you wanna put those out there too?
So resurfacing the tennis ball or. Thanks, tennis court, sure, sure, come on. Installing some gaga ball pits, those are like the dodgeball in an octagonal pin type of a thing. I had somebody call about chess tables and how they could get public chess tables installed somewhere, which was a really interesting fun ball to get. Other games like ball shot, they're like this. There's four holes that come out of this tube, you shoot ball up in there, you get points based on which hole it comes back out of. Um, badminton, other activities like that, like big yard games, giant Jenga, uh, giant chess. So that we can have more rentals available from the um concessions stand area. And then to do all summer long at both places, like part of the first Fridays all summer to make sure we're activating the memorial building in some sort of way. To get that exposure for the Fayetteville First Fridays. But then to have field day Fridays at the park during the summer. It may or may not be for a small fee, if it's consumable, I would expect we would charge a fee of some sort. Um, just to engage the youth, to get folks down there that can't commit or don't want to commit to any of the equal attempts to happen. But just something to get them down there.
Yes.
So PJ brought up a lot of the fun stuff. And similarly, um, the memorial building is that infrastructure part that we have down at the parks too. You know, we're, we got, we've been out an awesome bit this year to get the red hall. Roof re-done, um, we're currently working on the dining hall with ourselves, bought from there. Every one of the shelters, we just were buying silver stuff, put the silver coating down. It's taking that part with or without a pool and making it one step better than it was the last year, the year before and the year before. So there's a lot of infrastructure quality, it's about that, just all the way, think about gravel, you have forty-five hundred cars going through for, for Christmas. Do a lap, well, they did three laps. Imagine fifteen thousand people running down your driveway real fast and what that does to a simple gravel. You know, gravel costs money for the park is four thousand dollars a year, two thousand trunk, two thousand dollar trunk, and two thousand dollar trunk, just to lay it down. So is that something you look forward to in the future of paving that place and doing it? So just like the memorial building. So just like the memorial building and and looking at what we're gonna do and how we allocate funds. You know, also like playground equipment down there is pretty outdated, if you've seen it, and there's things like that, so. And that's where we invited all these different groups, and you gotta have so many different workshops to hear all these different ideas, the fun stuff. And the not fun stuff is kind of all part of it, and that's why it's the key, you know. Coach, you you did the wrestling tournament at the memorial building, your giant UJ R D's of parks with your race game. Do you know what really goes on behind these things? And what's needed, like can you show up what it looks like and how it performed? Um, you guys have anything?
Only thing is, you know, with everything being said, the shell of the memorial building is the priority. We don't take care of that, then everything else isn't. That's the big thing, just taking care of the outside, then gradually, the rest of it takes care of itself, yeah. That experience is the important thing.
Yeah, like I often said, it's your biggest spending on the inside until the outside. Jerry, do you have anything about the camps through the park for the memorial building itself?
The uh, the only thing that I would eventually like to see at the Fayette County Park is to make it more handicap accessible. I've been lucky enough so far that a kid in a wheelchair does not wanna come to camp. So if someone would want to come, I'm afraid I'd just say no. So I would like to see it kind of be accessible, so we don't turn anything.
We do have, uh, I believe two cabins that are handicap accessible, um, but of course, like you mentioned the gravel. Like getting from the dining hall to the cabin part of camp is not a delight, wow. But of course, also like those cabins are for certain ages and certain genders, so if it was like a male student. Like it gets a little, or male camper, I should say, it's a little tricky, um, but you know, I think you've got some. Kind of where we plan infrastructure wise, the fun stuff is always the stuff people are gonna wanna see, and like you put them in a thousand, like. If we do these repairs in the memorial building, it may not be seen by a lot of people, but it's um. Do some other stuff, so I think the same goes with the park. I think we all want a pool, I think we all agree with you, but there's other infrastructure things that have to park. So that we can, that generate maybe some revenue events, uh, because you can only charge what it's worth.
That's true, but one thing for the for the nonprofit groups, I mean. The uh, the county governments aren't aren't permitted to fundraise and solicit funds, so, I mean, fundraisers are something that we haven't really pursued. Um, but I know that we have the new five oh one C three coming up, um, that's, there's a countywide. Um, nonprofits standing up to help with issues like this, like from a full range of issues that that need funding, so they can fundraise and. And try to augment, you know, we can augment them, their projects and what they're doing, so. You know, if fundraising is something that you all are interested in, even just spearheading, even if we get volunteers to work. Based on the way you're organized, you were in a position to do that, where we can't, we cannot, so we have to actually, we. Our fundraising is grant application. But.
The sewer stuff, and we candidate an awesome presentation to the committee about sewer just a few weeks ago. If you guys have a sewer program, what it does, and how it brings in kids from, and it's cool about this one is it is not Fayetteville based. It is, you are reaching kids from Valley, Oak Hill, all these places, school buses, they're bringing them there to the camps. So that's, and and again, it's it, when you meet them, it's funny how we all look at the. Like what town we're in and what municipality we represent, but really, it's our region, it's like you start looking at what southern West Virginia has offered, and what your state has. If you see somebody on TV with a West Virginia hat, you're like, that's right, I don't care if they're from Wheeling, you know, it's like. The same thing with us, it's so easy to do these meetings and start thinking how much me, me, and how you pull it. But really, it's generating people into, and Fayetteville is the center part of the county, but everybody is not that far away. You know, Fayette County Park, it's not that far to Kinkake, Deepwater Valley, that way, or Miller's side, and San Jose, you know. And that's where all these little towns are.
I I I think it would be here, knows, you know, the more that we strategically design our communities and round up kids and for the future. The healthier they're gonna grow, the the less likely they're gonna develop a a motivation later in life, you know, it's. Putting this money into our parks and memorial building and having safe places for them. Is it's a huge investment, we might not see the the value of that investment for ten to fifteen to twenty years. But we have to think long term. Um, we did, I think the the United States is very short term oriented, but you really have to think long term. What's best for the next twenty years to really get uh, ground under our feet and have a healthy community.
Create our future. Yeah, we're starting to look right now, and the whole theme of it is you have to think seven generations, that. The things you decide to do now affect seven generations down the road, that was that was mind blowing, really. What do you, what do you think about the the levy for the sheriffs? They go down, do you think that a levy for projects like this? Maybe, I don't know what the percentage is, would be a potential thing they're just investigating.
There are some counties that have park and recreation levies, uh, there are some counties that have maintenance on building levies. Um, so to try to answer that right now. It'd be like, like taking a wild guess.
You go first.
Right now, the way the levy said, we're maxed anyway, there's nothing, this county is. Maxed on all taxes and levies the way it is right now.
We have been taxing.
That's why we've tried to. Cut the frivolous spending out, so maybe we can bring bring everything down and adjust everything, it's just a long process of adjusting what's been done. Yeah, it was seven generations, that's right, so I mean, we're we're, it's a work in progress is what it is, we've made a lot of changes last three to five years. Three to five years, and we'll continue, but yeah, we're maxed on taxes, so that.
For now, though.
For now, though, that's right, for now, though.
For now, but there are, well, that recreational tax is coming, um, there are other, because I think that's. Might be passed in legislature where we can implement a recreational tax on certain types of things, so. Like tourists, when they're doing things, they just pay cents on the dollar and that'll go into the county.
Like, that's what Gatlinburg is, are these towns, I, I think it's Gatlinburg, it's like, we use that in my recreation classes, I'd be on example, not in your community. But it's easy, they do have a very high, but like, play ride, very, there's twelve percent, eighty percent towns if you go to, and then we fall into. You spay that tax when you're there, and then it it does get to residents, people forget that, everybody in Fayetteville. Goes to Myrtle Beach, but there's people that really live in Myrtle Beach, there's really a fire department in Myrtle Beach, there's really a school in Myrtle Beach. So it's easier for us, like, kind of pick apart our thing, but when we go down there. Yeah, I drive around, look at what goes on, I look at the parks and the firehouse and the schools, like, because this is, there's real Myrtle Beach native people, or any town we've ever been to. And some people at our residence, sometimes here, they're like, yeah, people always come here, they, but the next day, you get to South Carolina, you know, it's like, it's it's easier. To forget that everywhere we go, it is okay, if we get that extra percentage of whatever it is for taxes, that is a huge. Stress our residents out, they're already taxed enough and.
And that also allows us to adjust everything, if that one percent tax happens, we'll be able to start adjusting the levy a little bit, and maybe that'll have more money. Yeah, yeah, it's it's all adjustment how it comes in.
I I I'm around around the country that operate in similar towns to to Fayette County area, and they um. They have a nonprofit group who invites their area recreation, and this is to do a self-imposed. Tax to their visitors. And they, you know, and you wanna remove it, oh, these guys are local, that is taking off automatically kind of thing. And they're able to raise so much money, so, um, it's it's a super impressive thing. If we get the five oh one C three thing, I will. Probably trying to figure out whether it needs that work.
They even tried to make a recreational district. And we can form a recreational district, if some of the recreational communities will allow that. And they come in and dress district, I asked the Boy Scouts of America to do that. Was in conjunction with Mount Hope to have a recreational district. I even asked, I mean, I talked to some other businesses, I'm not gonna name any names, I hate naming names, because then I'll get browbeats on the phone. But anyway, I've asked other recreational resorts if they would consider. Uh, making a recreational district, and then that money would go back into a board, and the board would make a decision where that money go for infrastructure and other things like that. So that, I mean, that that's another way, and there's only one other in the state of West Virginia, and that's uh, snowshoe.
Right.
But we can form that, and I did, I have, I have mentioned that to a few resorts. And and to do, try to, try to do that.
Right.
And and it and it goes on the visitors, it doesn't go on the residents. Just like he was mentioning, you go to Virginia Beach, you're paying sixteen, seventeen percent. I mean, I see it, I I look at it all the time, if I go anywhere, I look and see, everybody else is paying it, I don't think they're gonna care to pay if they go here, if they're gonna go to. Myrtle Beach, or they wanna go to Tennessee, I don't think they're gonna pay it here either, and it's not on residents.
Alright, so I guess the question now is that step, so. Amy is gonna look into the funding for the outside of the building, I think maybe once we get some information, we can. Perhaps form a working group or invite the park board to lead discussions on next steps. Because we've empowered the park board to, you know, we rely on them to make the decisions day to day, what we're doing and that sort of thing, and if they need something extraordinary, they come back. And ask for it, but they're the ones who are following this, we have really good people on our park board, active people, there are a lot of them here. Um, and so is that sound reasonable? That we.
Can I tell you what, I'd I'd like to see if the commission doesn't mind and and legion, if Fayetteville would put something together just to entertain. Partnership, if ev- ev- if everybody can agree on it, I mean, we're not setting everything in stone right now, but just see what a partnership would look like. In uh, with the memorial building, if everybody agrees, and I think everybody mentioned that today, as long as we keep it a a Fed Kennedy.
Well, I I'd like, I'd like them to work with the park board to do, to come up with an idea, I mean.
I didn't know that's what you were saying.
Our our park board, like whatever, you know, once you get the maintenance information and the ideas going, you know.
Our park was awesome, they go see, this week, for cities that you guys are here today, and like, you know, Miss Hannah wants to be, or she's about to announce, or whatever, like, there's no clown around. And there's got, they actually, they're all very integrated in memorial building, and to the park, and your community, if you're talking to coaches and people and workers, and. These guys are gonna get a good thumb on that.
Apologize, I didn't know you were talking about working in conjunction.
Again, we're not the experts, I, Tom, Tom doesn't mind becoming an expert, trying to become an expert in every little thing. That we do, but I mean, we put boards together to smart people on boards to help us. You know, to inform our decisions, and and then we support the boards, I mean, that's, to me, that's what their role is, so. I'd, you know, like to have all these energetic, you know, community do-gooders, I always make fun of PJ, because she, everything she's involved in. She's involved in so many things, and then she's able to fully function, you know, go hundred percent in all of those things and always have good ideas and. Well, I mean, I'm, you know, so, but if we could clone her, you know, the more of a building would be repaired by now, but. Um, but, you know, those are the people that I think should should come up with. You know, once in this, and and our park director with regard to the maintenance and and working with Oki and and your maintenance director. You know, to figure out what we need to prioritize to preserve the building, how much that's gonna cost and and how much, you know. And then come to us and, you know, pitch us and let us know, you know, what we're gonna need to apply to that that issue. As far as like what to do, this workshop was supposed to get at some of that and get some of these ideas on the table, but. I really think the park board is best poised to work with the American Legion and and the town of Fayetteville to figure out, you know, what a good solution is, and come back. And pitch this body, I know you like to be in the middle, now you could go to their meetings if you want to, and do all that, and. I mean, I don't, you know, I'd rather let the experts come to us with ideas, because I I just, it's overwhelming to me. So many people have more information than I do.
It's a tough timeline, too, thinking about your budget spending and like our bids that are out and this, this, so, it's one of those things where. Soon the better, but also you don't want to under, you don't wanna go too high or too low, you really want it real done.
Right.
So it's like, we can look at. And Amy, like, if all her wishlist comes through, we are loving it, but if not, then we have to have that bad news talk, like, okay, well, we didn't get this, but we still need to do this. And then everybody said the same thing here, infrastructure, water, high building, and then we can afford the fine stuff.
We know what the priority is for the outside of the memorial building. We'd like to know, or I'd like to know what your priorities would be for inside the building, once we get to outside security. Um, same thing for the park, what's your priority list, what's your dream list, what would you like to have done?
Because there, I mean, we can ask for money for the pool, and I'm not sure, frankly, if if we're gonna get it. I mean, and I don't think we have enough to allocate toward fixing it. But there are alternatives out there that we could do things for for the kids there, um, that might be more feasible. And or generate more revenue, I don't know the answers, but but, I mean, I I just want you to open your minds and. Come up with those ideas and and maybe vet them a little bit and see if there's something that might be doable, because we do need something. Um, some activity, and I know you guys have done a great job, but a lot of people don't know, like, the park has really grown, and they're doing a lot more things than. Than they've done in a long, long time, as far as activities, you wanna tell some of the activities, because I really, you know, you do the disc golf, you have the. Pickball, you have the lights, you have summer camps.
Yeah, yeah, like coming up, we have heat dragon coming up, dude, this month, trout derby coming up right after that, which I like, because. You don't just get a show, and you get some candy, like, you might have earned that cash, you know, so the trout, but that's also an affiliation with Sheriff Department. There's a few people show up on lots of parking pieces, but same thing, the memorial, we talked about how to remember it, also how to remember the park. I remember leaving the pool, going to the canteen, and it was everything, now maybe it's just because we're kids, and we're not even getting it done, but I didn't see anything, like, I didn't see a dead tree. You know, it's like, so that's kind of the goal, what we're happening down there, and with the effort and discussing what we can do with it, such as disc golf. Playground features, and there's, there's lots of different options and things to do. We are kind of bike show concept, coming up another workshop, some trails, and collections and things like that, that's been, that's out there, there's a Girl Scout property beside. Our property that is sitting right there, you know, we have a whole bunch of stuff that you can do. And every one of you guys also have the same thing about how many people are coming to this town, you know, guess what, at our Fayetteville town, you can't park. Yeah, like last few days, it's been wide open, we think it's business season, remember back when Fayetteville was busy in June, well, Fern Creek Park and lot was full last weekend. You know, it's February then, you know, it's it's just the way it is, so same with that park, but the thing is, we, it's also gonna take this a. Little bit of a multimedia push to get people to our county park during these days, and that'll take off some stress at the town park. You know, and basketball courts are full there, but hey, we, it's a whole nother park, we saw a guy doing a trouser riding at the park the other day. Trouseriding is when you take your bike and jump up on the table and jump off the table, and people are freaking out, but that's what that guy was really good at. It's not what we wanted to see, maybe, you know, maybe a little bit nervous, I'm like, hey, I got a great park here with lots of big rocks, so I tried to talk to him, they're coming down there. But that's it, the park that you guys, remember, if you get to come down for Christmas and you gotta see is like, that's two months of putting up lights, you know? And it seems like you made a whole bunch of money, these guys spent five bucks, which one thing they didn't raise in the world is five dollars for Christmas lights every year. But it's like, the overhead of having those guys put those lights up and taking them down is extraordinary. That's a lot of work to do, it's two months to get them up.
Set pool, you just, the pool?
Yeah, the pool been closed for a few years.
I know, but when it was open, it seemed like every time I've been down there, nobody had, y'all people were in.
Yeah, I I was, I remember when we were kids, like, with your boys, back in those crowds, right, if you get there. Right, everybody, everybody got hitchhikers, I dropped the order, you know, it did get, but there's also other opportunities too, like, you know. My parents didn't drive Summersville, you know what I'm saying, like, think about it, we took a trip to Summersville Lake, it was like going to Myrtle Beach with my family, you know, it's like, it's just overwhelming. They were good, we go to Fayette County Pool, but if you go to the lake, that's like a whole nother world, and that's a different, the generations have changed, like now, if my kid wants to go to. How we're at the lake, I don't think twice about it, let's go, or we go to the park, or wherever, our rules have gotten a lot bigger, so the park pool number did go down quite a bit. But there's still quite a few people there on a busy Saturday at three o'clock, it's wide open, I would go Sunday morning early, nobody was there, my son, I had a great time, all ourselves.
Why, everybody's got their own individual rules, neighborhood kids going to their neighbor's pool, so that takes some weight and courage.
There there's an alarming number of kids in the county that don't know how to swim.
Oh, yeah.
Spread out quite a bit, too, you think about like, how do ones, life jacket sales, also, people are at the river, people are at the lakes, people are doing other things, when we were kids, that's. You go near the river, you're drowning, you know, it's like, we'll get you, you know, it's like, the world has, there's so many different opportunities out there between bikes. Climbing, and all these other things, all these kids are having different, different. There's so many different opportunities out there between bikes, climbing, and all these other things, all these kids are having different, different passions. Than what I remember as a kid, baseball, football, go to the pool.
Yeah, for us, it was pool or nothing, pool or dust.
And it wasn't just to go to the pool, what was it, it was to hang out, I remember like, the first independence I had was walking from the pool to the canteen. Your mom gave you like a dollar, and like, can you go alone, this is the coolest thing you can have. And that was a social scene to be down, we also, back in the day, you heard your mom would drop you off at the pool, and that was acceptable. Now, that's kind of wild, you can't drop kids off anymore, those kids don't listen to vipers, right? And then getting your staff at the pool is a whole nother situation too, once you get that place, you know, it's like, it's hard to get a group that wanna do that.
Right, their life are shortages nationwide.
Nation, great abuse.
It's, it's. I think we have a good foundation. Um, we know, we have the list you guys gave us, I know we have the list that, um, Brian and Oki, our chiefs of maintenance, keep. Um, we've got some grants, um, that Amy is writing for, but also we're trying to get just some estimates on these repairs. So we can put in for the grants, cause that information has to inform the grant, so we're gonna have that information. Anyway, even if the grant is not available or affordable, we can still consider applying money towards that meeting. Anybody have any comments? Thank you.